Well, then we'll go ahead and call the Commissioners' Work Session of August 9th to order. For those of you that may not be familiar with what we do, every couple of weeks on Mondays, we have what's called a Work Session. And the purpose of the Work Session is to discuss things that need to be brought into the public, but maybe aren't ready for a vote necessarily just yet. And so we'll set the agenda for our Wednesday voting meeting and discuss any matters of the public. Today, we have Roger Coop from the Game Commission, who will be talking to us about chronic wasting disease. Before getting into that, I need to announce that these are public meetings, and as a consequence, they are recorded and will be posted on the county's YouTube channel in the near future. I can't control it.
You can't hear? Just a little louder.
Alright. We would also normally have public hearings and/or bid openings, but we don't have any of those on the agendas today. We haven't actually had a meeting at the fair in a long time, because the Commissioners' annual conference is usually at the same time. So we're usually in Harrisburg Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday this week, but very pleased this year to bring back an old tradition of having at least one meeting here at the fair, so that we can hear from you, the public, on what's going on. So the first order of business here is Roger, if Roger is ready. So I'm gonna give Roger the microphone, and we're just gonna have an informal conversation about chronic wasting disease.
Hi.
Want me to grab you a chair in here?
No.
Okay, the camera's here, so let me turn that back on here. Yeah, why don't you sit down? That'd be great.
Actually, I can't. I can go get another chair.
That's fine, I'll just hang here.
I'll go get another chair, it's okay. You can go ahead.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you for inviting me to the panel. I'll talk to you today about chronic wasting disease, CWD, everybody's favorite topic these days. Basically, what I'd like to do is just give you a background on the disease itself and lead up to where we are right now with CWD in Warren County. CWD was first identified in Colorado in 1967 in captive wild deer. And over time, it gradually spread northward, southward, and eastward.
Roger, can you hold it a little closer?
Oh, sorry. Gradually spread northward and southward, and then started working its way east. And first showed up east of the Mississippi and Wisconsin. First showed up in Pennsylvania in 2012 in a captive deer facility in Adams County. That led to the creation of our first Disease Management Area. That same year, later that same year, it was discovered in three free-ranging wild deer that had been harvested by hunters. They were sampled as part of our routine sampling that we do. And that led to the creation of our second Disease Management Area. After five years, we didn't find any more around the first Disease Management Areas, so that area was dissolved. We did not have any more positive animals in the wild or captive facilities. But Disease Management Area Two has continued to expand with additional positives in wild and captive animals. Then in 2014, CWD was discovered in Jefferson County in a captive facility. That led to Disease Management Area Three being created. And that has also since expanded with additional positives found in captive and wild animals. And then coming up to 2021, we discovered CWD in a captive deer. We had that confirmed in May of this year in a captive facility in Pine Grove Township in Warren County. And CWD, just briefly, is an always fatal neurologic disease that affects members of the deer family. So there's no cure for it, there's no vaccine for it. So whenever it shows up, it's a special concern for us to try to maintain the health of our deer herd. So we established what we call Disease Management Area Five. Oh, I forgot to mention, we had a positive deer in Lancaster County between Disease Management Area Three and Five, but it's Disease Management Area Four. I almost forgot about that one. We now have Disease Management Area Five here in Warren County. It's about 211 square miles. And within that Disease Management Area, we established what we call the Enhanced Surveillance Unit, which is about a three-mile buffer area around that positive deer. That area was narrow, we wanted to do more intensive sampling of deer in that vicinity. And that area was also made into what we call Deer Management Assistance Program Unit, or DMAP unit. That's unit number 4464. We allocated 412 DMAP coupons, permits for that area. And as of this past Friday, 245 of those have been sold. So people are aware of it, people are taking advantage of it, the opportunity to help us get additional samples. Within that Enhanced Surveillance Unit, we also have what we call a containment zone, which is a one-mile buffer around that deer, where we will work with landowners if it becomes necessary and we need additional samples to have them allow some targeted removal of deer, which would be done primarily by the United States Department of Agriculture Wildlife Services to remove deer in specific areas around that wild deer, or that captive deer, I'm sorry. So we have the DMA established, we have the Enhanced Surveillance Unit, and we have the Containment Zone established. During hunting season, we will also be providing hunters the opportunity to drop off their heads from their deer that they harvest within the DMA at head drop bins that we will have distributed throughout the Disease Management Area. And we have a map showing those locations for the Commissioners here today. And hunters will be able to drop their heads off during all the deer seasons, from the beginning of archery season through the end of flintlock season in January. We will sample those heads, collect those heads every day during hunting season, sample those, and get them shipped to the lab ASAP, so hunters get their results as quickly as possible. And we want to do that to both add to our sampling and to help hunters contribute to the sampling, and put hunters' minds at ease. They can find out if their deer are test positive for CWD or if CWD is not detected in their deer. And what we would recommend to hunters, if they drop their heads off in a drop bin, is to simply go ahead and process their deer, but freeze the meat until they get their results, which we hope will only be about a week or two. And that way, they find out that it's not detected, and they can go ahead and eat the meat from their deer. If CWD is detected in their deer, it's their choice if they choose to eat it. If they choose not to, we will gladly collect the meat and dispose of it for them, and they can be issued a new tag if we're still within the deer seasons to go out and harvest another deer. So that's the gist of our CWD management at this point. We are setting up a sampling station, which we expect to be at the Pendott location, just outside of Warren. We are also going to be hiring a person dedicated to sampling at that sampling station to handle the CWD sampling here in Warren County. We hope to have some outreach and probably some public meetings as we get things more settled and finalized to get some more information out to people. And anyone that has any questions about CWD here in Warren County, welcome to call the Northwest Regional Office and ask it for me if you'd like.
The number there is 814-432-3177. And also here to provide any Harrisburg perspective on CWD and our CWD management is our local member of the Board of Commissioners, Kristen Geiger. And Kristen, do you want to say hello?
Thanks, Roger. I wish we were here talking about something more fun and more positive than CWD. But I think what's important to get out to the members of this community, this is new here, but CWD is not a new disease. And we have some very good science that backs up a lot of what we're doing. And a lot of what we're doing, we really, really, really need hunter participation to be successful. These head drop locations that are scattered throughout this Disease Management Area, even if you don't care whether your deer has CWD or not, take the time to drop your head in that head bin. Because the more numbers that we have, the better our data is to say what the disease prevalence rate is, isn't, might be, whatever, in this area. The ultimate goal, if we were living in a rainbows and unicorns kind of world, would be that we would find everything came back not detected, right? We don't want this in our community, hunters don't want it in our community. And so we need to work together as hunters, as conservationists, as members of this community, to know we're all pulling in the same direction on this rope to get to where we need to be. So hopefully, in five years, DMA Five gets erased from the map.
Thank you, Kristen. As Kristen pointed out, we don't want to find CWD anymore in Warren County, especially in the wild deer population. But the reason we want to do the increased sampling and get as many samples as possible is to make sure if we don't find it, we've got enough samples to say with confidence that we don't have it in the wild population in Warren County. So to repeat what, or to emphasize what Kristen said, we really need hunter participation. We will have those drop boxes available, please make use of them. Hunters in our other Disease Management Areas have used them. We've got good participation, and we really need your help to help us manage CWD. And at that point, or at this point, I'll open up. If the Commissioners have any questions, or anyone here has any questions for me or for Kristen, we'll try to answer them.
I'll go ahead and start off, if you don't mind. First question is, you were talking about the science. How do we know that one-mile radius or whatever is enough? I don't know how far deer might roam, but I suspect it's more than a mile, right?
Deer's dispersal distances vary depending on the sex of the animal. The males will disperse further, and also on the available food supply. Average dispersal distance for deer is usually a mile. Home range is, on average, a mile. So the one-mile radius gives us a pretty good sample right immediately around that positive animal, and gives us an idea if it has spread to deer within a mile of that, then we have to go out further to see if it's spread further than that. But the one-mile is a good starting point based on average dispersal distance and home range sizes.
If people see a deer that's exhibiting some sort of strange sign, symptom, what should they do?
If people see deer, if they're hunting and they harvest a deer that appears sick, they should call the Game Commission. An officer can come out and take a look at the deer. If they determine it looks like it is sick or in poor shape, they can take the deer, so we can sample it and issue the Hunter们的tag. Outside of hunting season, if they see a deer that appears to be in very bad shape, exhibiting symptoms, and I'll mention the symptoms in a moment, they should call the Game Commission, the regional office, and we can dispatch an officer to come out and take a look at that animal, determine if it is in bad shape, and be put down, and then we can sample it. And one thing about CWD, which makes it hard to know if an animal's positive or not, is it has a very long incubation period, up to two years before an animal starts to show symptoms, even though that animal can be shedding the infectious agent into the environment for all that time before it starts to show symptoms. And the infectious agent is a prion. What we call a prion, which is simply an abnormally shaped piece of protein. It's not a living entity like a virus or bacteria, or a fungus, or a parasite. So it's difficult to detect, and there's no treatment for it, and it can persist in the environment for a very long time. So hunters may harvest a deer that appears perfectly healthy, but we still urge them to drop their head in the bin, get that deer sampled, because it still could be positive for CWD without yet showing symptoms.
Roger, I think that's very, very important to emphasize that point, that it has an extremely long incubation period. By the time a hunter sees a deer that's exhibiting classic CWD symptoms, that deer has likely spread that infection to a number of other deer. And because it can persist in the soil for years and years, deer are very, very social animals. Once they come in contact with each other, and they're licking each other, and they're licking the same salt lick, you know, these are some of the reasons why the Game Commission doesn't advocate putting salt licks in front of trail cams, for instance. There are different ways that we as hunters and as conservationists can kind of slow the spread, right? We've all heard "slow the spread" more times than we can count over the last year and a half. And when you look at the overarching theme of that, whether it's COVID with humans or CWD with deer, I mean, when deer get together, that's when it's gonna be, that's when it's going to, you know, get spread from animal to animal, just like when people get together, it gets spread from person to person. So just because you harvested deer within the DMA, and it looked like a perfectly healthy deer, hopefully it was, get it tested anyway.
What are some of the symptoms of CWD that you would see in a deer in the event that you come across one in the non-hunting season?
So the classic ones are weight loss, you know, you'll see their ribs, they'll be drooling, there'll be saliva coming out of their mouth, their head will be down. I mean, they'll just look really sick. You'll be like, man, that deer probably needs to be put out of its misery. You know, there's classic symptoms of rabies, for instance, the raccoons out in the daytime, those sorts of things. Rabies doesn't have the same incubation period that CWD has, which is kind of what makes this very, very unique. And something that hunters need to understand is, man, maybe my deer is infected, but maybe it only got infected six, eight, 10, 12 months ago, and it's not showing those clinical signs yet.
Are there repercussions for people who ingest meat that is from an animal that has CWD? Like, is there any kind of human concern over, like, ah, forget it, I'm not gonna take my head in, all this other stuff, you're gonna test it, I'm just gonna eat this thing? If it was sick with it, is there a chance that something could happen to that? And you may have covered that already, I was getting a chair.
No, we didn't, and I'm glad you asked. So far, there's been no cases of people contracting CWD from eating infected meat. But because it's caused by a prion, and it's a similar disease to man-cow disease, and also a human disease called Creutzfeldt-Jakobson disease, we recommend people do not eat meat from a deer that they know is tested positive for CWD. Because I don't think anybody wants to be the first case of a human being contracting CWD. So we recommend not eating it. Ultimately, it's a hunter's choice, but we recommend not consuming it. And again, if their deer is determined to be positive, we'll gladly collect that meat, dispose of it for them, and they can get another tag harvested on a deer. And one thing, you mentioned, Kristen, to emphasize, we mentioned salt licks. Within the Disease Management Area, there are certain restrictions. It is illegal to feed deer within the Disease Management Area or to put out salt licks, things like that, that congregate deer in an area and can hasten the spread, and deer are in close contact with each other. It's also illegal to use or possess natural urine-based lures during hunting season. If they're artificial lures, those are still not recommended because they still can congregate deer. But we know that the prion can be shed in urine and feces, so it's illegal to use those lures to try to attract deer. So I wanted to add to that, you mentioned that, Kristen. We want to try to avoid congregating deer unnaturally or in some artificial way as much as possible.
So if, and I apologize again if you've covered this hypothetically, we do nothing, it spreads, and it becomes a problem in the county. What would that look like? What would be the long-term repercussions for, whether it's the hunting population, the natural environment, the, you know, if we were to do nothing?
Ultimately, what you would see, you'd see a drop in the deer herd as it spreads and becomes more prevalent, which would, of course, reduce the opportunities for hunters to harvest deer and affect, in the long run, the number of people hunting. And I know in Warren County, especially being one of the Warren County deer counties, hunting is a big boon in the local economies, and you probably see some impacts in local economies. Can have repercussions in a lot of ways to the environment as well. Deer, when they're in balance with their environment, they can keep certain vegetation in check, keep the overall structure of the forest at a healthy level. They do a certain amount of browsing, but not overbrowsing. If deer numbers drop below what the carrying capacity can handle, you can see a lot of vegetation then starting to take over, some things that were kept in check by the stable deer herds now, so...
More basic.
Right. So there's a lot of repercussions, both for the hunting population, for people as hunters, for the deer population, and for the environment that the deer inhabit. A lot of potential repercussions.
Now, you said that they were captive deer?
Yes.
What does that mean?
So the facility is a deer farm, they raise deer.
Okay.
So a lot of people wonder too, right? If it's on a deer farm, how is that gonna impact wild deer? How is that gonna impact hunting? Like we mentioned before, deer are very social animals. And this particular deer was harvested, I think, in December, or December-ish, we'll say of 2020. The sample was put in a freezer for a few months and then was tested. So that also means that that deer was most likely on the ground during what's called the rut or, you know, deer breeding season, which is when they're most social. And deer will come together through the fence, and we know that this disease can be spread through saliva, through urine, through feces. So did that animal have nose-to-nose contact with a wild deer? We don't know. I mean, we hope not. There's not a double fence rule or law or anything in Pennsylvania, which hypothetically would prevent that from happening. So we do know that captive deer have infected wild deer in the past. So we need to, you know, as conservationists and as a state agency, it's our duty and our obligation to figure out to the best of our ability if this is an issue in the wild deer herd, which is a resource that's held in public trust.
Thank you, Kristen. And as you said, our biggest concern with the deer facility was there was not a double fence there, so there definitely is potential for nose-to-nose contact with wild deer. And when I've gone by the facility, there's a lot of wild deer around the fence and around the facility. And at the site where this positive deer was located, the deer farm has three different sites. The site where this deer was located, all of the remaining deer there were put down and tested. No more of them came back positive. But in walking around the fence of that facility, there are numerous deer tracks right around that fence of wild deer in the area. So the potential for contact with wild deer definitely exists.
And it's also an interesting dynamic, right? Because the Game Commission is obviously charged with protection of the resource as far as public deer are concerned. The private deer industry is under the regulatory authority of Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture, so it has nothing to do with the Pennsylvania Game Commission. So there is a massive amount of collaboration between the landowner, between the agency, between multiple agencies, to try to keep this thing in check as best as possible. But it is definitely not a Pennsylvania Game Commission-only show right now. It's a lot of people coming together and putting their heads together, pointing up to the table and saying, man, let's do what we can here.
Absolutely. It's a lot of collaborations, Kristen said. And where we hope to have our sampling facility is on Pendott property. So that brings Pendott in full tune with helping to try and manage CWD.
At this point, you brought a map of where you were looking at putting some of the head, where you're putting the head drops, are those firm up at this point? Or are they still kind of up for negotiation?
I just got the final approval on the last one this morning on the way up. I had a phone call. So those are finalized, and I will send that information to our Harrisburg office. It can be put on our website, so it's available for hunters by the time hunting season ends.
If I could, is there any negative impact on the processing, deer processing facilities within the county if they were to process an infected deer?
The main thing with the processors, we would urge them to take caution, if possible, to clean their equipment, to clean gear. We also set up what we call cooperating processors and taxidermists within the Disease Management Area and partially, partial areas around outside it. Hunters can take their deer there, get them processed. They harvested it in the DMA. And processors agree to dispose of what we call the high-risk parts within the waste stream, so that they go to a certified landfill. The high-risk parts, I'm glad you asked that question, brings that to mind, are areas where the CWD prions concentrate within the deer. And that would be the brain, the spinal cord, the lymph nodes, the eyes. Anywhere where there's a lot of nervous tissue is where the prions can concentrate. So we try to avoid those leaving the DMA and ending up on the landscape outside of the DMA. So if hunters go to cooperating processor or taxidermist, they know that those high-risk parts will be disposed of properly. Within the DMA, same thing, processors can dispose of them in the waste stream. Hunters, if they are going to process their own deer, we recommend they can simply bone it out and leave the high-risk parts on the landscape because it's already within the DMA, so we know it's not leaving the DMA and risking that. So I'm glad you brought that up, reminded me about the high-risk parts issue.
Thank you. I'm assuming if it was tested, it was because of the deer farm. They probably, I would assume that there's regulations that before they sell the meat, they have to test it for wasting disease.
Yeah, the Department of Agriculture has two different herd management programs for captive deer. One is the certified management program, the other is called a herd management program. Each of those require at least 50% of the deer that die on the farms to be tested for CWD. But I believe this farm is in the certified program. If I'm not mistaken, this requires all of them to be tested. So when it was harvested by a hunter in December, it was tested. The sample was submitted with batched samples, I believe in April of this year, and then we got the confirmation back in May. So there are rules in place and regulations that the deer have to be tested for CWD.
Can you test a deer that's still alive?
There's no reliable test. They've been trying to come up with something for years. And the deer farming industry has been really trying to come up with something because of the tremendous boon to them. But there's no reliable test. The only way to be sure is after the deer is dead, to sample the lymph nodes right behind the larynx. That's where the prions concentrate the most, because the lymph nodes are part of the immune system. So they concentrate there for us. So there is no reliable live animal test.
One thing that's come in on my mind is, and I've heard at least a couple of people say this, you know, in this past year, how many of us either had like a COVID test or something and came back positive and weren't really sick? Is it at all possible that this, you know, one single case is a fluke?
It's always possible to get false positives, it's happened occasionally. But we have double confirmations of every case. When it's first submitted to the Department of Agriculture, because this sample was previously frozen, they use what we already call the gold standard test, which takes a little longer. For fresh samples, we do a faster test, so we can get results to hunters more quickly. But we consider preliminary tests until it's confirmed by the gold standard test. They did the gold standard test, it came back positive. And then the sample was sent to the National Wildlife Lab in Colorado for confirmation. And it was confirmed there. So we had double confirmation by the gold standard test that disposed the positive.
I apologize for getting into the weeds on this.
No, I'm sorry.
This is fascinating. So is it possible, so you have a deer farm. Did this originate there organically? Or is it possible that that deer came to another place and brought it to the facility? Because if it originated there organically, it either got it or it got from a wild animal through the fence. through the fence.
We, we, we know that this deer came from another deer farm, and the trace backs, the Ag Department, Department of Agriculture does what they call trace forwards and trace backs. They'll trace forward where animals from the positive farm have gone, and then those farms will be quarantined and the animals will check. And then they'll trace back where that animal came from and how many farms animals potentially exposed to that animal might have gone to. The trace forward involves several facilities, the trace back could possibly be over 100 different places that animals that were exposed to this deer shipped to other deer farms, and the animals from those farms went to other deer farms, so they're still working on the trace backs. But we're confident it did not originate from a wild deer, that it came with that deer.
That's really interesting, because that's why I was curious about that.
And but one of the reasons we're doing the Enhanced Surveillance and the intensive testing is to make sure it's not in the wild population, and whether it achieved it through the fence. It likely didn't spontaneously originate in, in the area, because we know, we know it, it started on a captive deer facility in Colorado in 1967. And on that same facility, they were working sheep, and there's a similar disease in sheep called scraping. So we still don't know the exact origins of the CWD prion, whether it, you know, was a modified scraping prion that started to affect deer. But we're confident that it did not originate on that deer. Confident it probably arrived with that positive.
Very interesting, thank you.
Thank you for coming today and for sending...
Yeah, Roger, very much appreciate that.
Thank you.
Important topic.
And if you'd like, at any time, an updated presentation or a more detailed presentation, I'd be glad to attend another meeting sometime if you want to.
It might be worth it to talk about doing something closer for hunting season.
Yeah.
Certainly if something changes, like another case, that was obviously triggered broader conversation. All right, thank you very much, Kristen, for coming too. Well, luckily for this agenda, that's about it. So on the Wednesday meeting, it's a simple agenda, refilling the grant writer position, depository tax bids, CDBG resolution, and talk transportation services and government management system policy and for future updates. So at least among that, we're going to have Act 57, some election stuff, and don't forget we have the election discussion related Freehold Township on Wednesday as well. So that's it, did we miss anything on the agenda?
I don't think so.
All right. Any discussion about any of those items? All right. Any general discussion, commissioner schedule, anything like that? If not, let's go enjoy some ice cream and/or sugar.
And I have some maps, you're welcome to give out.
Yeah, when you're done, when you have your official stuff, can you send it to us? Because we'll share it through the website.
These are our CWD brochure, which was recently updated in our new Disease Management Area, so if you want to make those available to anyone, welcome to.
All right, there's no executive session, so we are adjourned. Thank you.